Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the regular meeting for the Daly City Library Board of Trustees for March 19, 2019. I call this meeting to order. Shall we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please? Here.
Trustee Bameo.
Uh, here.
Trustee Faupoua.
Here.
Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Trustee Santos.
Here.
And Vice President Logarta.
Present.
You're all present and accounted for.
Thank you. So, is it okay to... So, I'd like a motion to approve to move up an agenda item because we have a special guest with us today, and she wanted to give some comments to us. So, motion to approve?
I would, just as a point of order, suggest you can do that in connection with approving the agenda all in one motion.
Okay, okay. We'll do that. Okay. So, I hope everyone's had a chance to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda and move an agenda item up?
I motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. And for our minutes from our last meeting, February 19, 2019, is there a second to move? I mean, is there a motion to move?
Motion to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, you can bring public comments.
Hi. So, I'd like to bring up the public comment.
I've been a member... My name's Carol Fodlestrom, and I've lived in Daly City for decades. And I am just now starting to get interested in what libraries have to offer, and went to the South San Francisco library only to discover that they have lots and lots of resources, hoping that Daly City also had these resources, and found out that they do not. So, they even have a recording studio. I know they have a wonderful grant program, and I was wondering why Daly City does not have similar programs. And I know if we go to San Francisco, they have some really nice programs, and I was told Santa Fe had some good programs. And I was really hoping that... How can we get some good programs in Daly City?
Did you want to take this one, Sheila?
The short answer is one word.
Funding.
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 The long answer, and Trustee Dos could chime in too, is if you compare the resources that the Daly City Public Library have compared to our counterparts, not only in the county but in the Bay Area, we don't have the resources that South San Francisco and San Francisco has. San Francisco has 27 public libraries that are open seven days a week. We have four libraries that are barely staffed enough to keep two of them open five days a week, one's open two days a week, one's open three days a week. That is the maximum staff we are authorized to have. We cannot be open more hours. We have computers in our libraries that are six years old. We don't have funding to even upgrade the most basic part of what a lot of people are going to the library for is for new computers. We subscribe to a lot of online programs and material sources, but we don't necessarily have the same ability to subscribe to... I don't know specifically what you found at South San Francisco that we don't have, but again, the short answer is they've got a lot more.
So, I guess my question is why? Why do they have funding, and why does Daly City not? I know you said funding, but...
That, I mean, that's a great question. You could argue that it's a value system of the city. I mean, one of the things we talked about was if you go back to 1978 and the early eighties, Daly City's funding of its four libraries was equivalent to what it is funding for the Daly City Police Department at that time. In 2019, that is not true. Resources for public safety, police in particular, where it was equally funding libraries and police? Police has a budget more than 10 times the Daly City Public Libraries. Daly City has very limited resources in terms of revenue. The city overall, not just the libraries, but the city overall, is dependent on property tax and sales tax. We don't have the huge industrial heart that South San Francisco has, for example. We don't have big corporate businesses here. We have... It's a residential city. The reality is that revenue the city gets is less than what we're expending. So, there's not a lot of resources to put into all of the services, whether it's, you know, maintaining facilities and parks and streets, purchasing, you know, life safety equipment for the fire department, or maintaining a police force that's on duty seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. You know, if the priority were to spend more money on libraries, less spending would have to happen somewhere else. And, you know, we're not making those decisions. We are trying to exist in the best possible way with the resources that are allocated to the libraries in Daly City.
May I say another thing? I know that Daly City has just recently approved the HART program, which is... The HART program is a benefit to helping first-time homebuyers. I'm also a Realtor.
The housing endowment? Is it HART?
The HART program.
Yeah, it's a housing endowment.
It helps first-time homebuyers. You help them with down payment money. And for years, Daly City was the only city, I think besides Palo Alto, that did not give money for first-time homebuyers. And we've been after Daly City, and you have fin... Not you. Daly City has finally agreed, which to me means that...
Can I ask you... You're being telephoned.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you. I'm guessing people are...
Okay. So, which to me means that if some of the money is coming from property taxes, then if the money is coming from property taxes, now that you are in the HART program, that means that homes are turning over. So, that means that people who have Prop 13 are selling their homes, and first-time homebuyers are being able to buy into the city of Daly City. Therefore, you're getting more property taxes because Prop 13 is gone, or they have at least...
13 is not gone. We have people living in Daly City that have lived here for 60 years.
Okay, I'm one of them, not 60 years.
That is actually a huge problem. We actually talked about that today. That's the lack of turnover for those legacy properties that were here from the, you know, property owners from the seventies. There's, you know, I don't want to get on a horse, but the properties are not turning over fast enough.
But, no, but because of the HART program, I believe that you will start seeing turnover because people need money to buy a home. With the HART program, they now have the down payment money to buy a home in Daly City. So, somebody like me or Bill over here might sell their home.
Might.
Yes. I'm not saying... Eventually, we're both going to, correct? But I'm just saying is that you're going to have more people buying in Daly City, and that's going to give you more funds for your program. But even if it's not that, what I... Because I asked Daly City, the librarian, actually, and I hope I don't get her into hot water, she said Prop 13. And I said, "Well, I'm not selling my home to help the library. Sorry, I'm not doing that."
I mean, that's oversimplistic.
Right. Exactly.
That's a factor among many. I mean, I think probably the greater reason is the cost of pensions and health insurance.
Right. But she said that the money that... Where was I going with my train of thought here was the grant. South San Francisco has employed somebody who writes grants, and they, I mean, they have free shuttles, I mean, for everything. They have decided that the city of South... The residents of South San Francisco are really important. So, I guess I'm saying maybe you need to put more of your efforts into grant writing because that's where the money is. And I don't know, maybe you have a... They can have a cup of coffee with whoever writes their grants. I guess it's Park and Rec, whoever is over there. But to me, I know you don't have the funds, but if all the other cities are, why are we poor? And I'm just... I'm just saying, I guess, what can I do to help get you money, I mean, besides selling my house?
That would be helpful. You can certainly support the Daly City Public Library Associates, which is a nonprofit group that is... Functions very much like a friends of library in Daly City.
Right, I saw that.
If you're not a member, that is a good starting point, and support their fundraising efforts. They definitely help us out. You mentioned grants. They've given us over $200,000 in grants in recent years.
That's good.
We have grants from other sources, too. If we... Yes?
I was going to say, we are... Oh, sorry. Daly City is currently in the initial stages exploring a joint grant to cover, hopefully, some technology in our library with South San Francisco and with some of the other neighboring communities. And their grant writer is helping us out, but that person is typically doing more, you know, buildings and things like that, infrastructure-type stuff. So, what we're asking for is different, and I'm sure it will work out well, but it's... The operating costs are really the thing that's getting us. And if we, not that we could, but if we were building a new library, being able to have people there to keep it open a good number of hours is really, really a priority because we want to make sure, if there is investment, that it's well spent.
I noticed when I go to the library, I always look to see what's for sale, like doesn't like a sale. And there's not a lot of books. Are we not asking... I mean, I don't think this is going to bring in tons of money, but why aren't we having a book sale, like a couple times a year? Why aren't we doing...
When we have book sales, we get a ton of resources to maybe make $1,200.
I was just going to say, it probably doesn't bring in a lot of money.
It doesn't.
No, okay.
It's more a feel-good activity than a real genuine fundraiser.
But it probably makes people know that the library is here. And like I said, I didn't realize that Daly... South City had such a wonderful program until I happened to see something and said, "Oh, I'd like to take that course." And so, I went and took it, and then only to discover that the online... And then they came and did a presentation at one of our board meetings, and I was astounded by what South San Francisco had to offer, so...
Help me out here, but I'm going to go out on a limb, and if she can back me up. South San Francisco has half the number of public libraries as Daly City, yet spends twice as much for the library, the two libraries they have than we do on our four libraries. I would say that's true for the entire city of South San Francisco. You compare budget to...
Not just libraries.
Not just libraries.
So, you have one...
There is a lot more revenue coming into the municipality of South San Francisco than in Daly City.
Do you think that's because of the technology?
Biotech companies.
Look at the east side of 101 over there. It's...
Yeah, I'm sure that has a lot to do with it.
You have brought up some very excellent and very valid points, and I'm just sitting here and listening to you. I wish we had more people like you that are, you know, sitting there and bringing the same effort. I am new on the board, and so is my other fellow board members. And to tell you the truth, that when Mr. Corrin went with me and my colleague right here over the budget, or, you know, as it come down to the end, it's all about that pocketful of money. So, we can't run anything with empty bucket. So, I hear what you say that South San Francisco, because I did ask the same thing. I was looking at the numbers like, "Why are they getting that? Why aren't we getting this? Why do they have more money? We have more population. They don't. We have more libraries running. They have too." So, the question that keeps on going right now is why and how? So, right now, hopefully, you know, hearing what you're saying and what I've already noticed already, and I know that it's not going to happen overnight, that we have to start working it and put it in perspective. So, we might not have an answer for you, but I appreciate you being here today and voice how you feel about what's happening and what we're seeing already. I applaud you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, shall we proceed to the election of officers? I'd like to open the floor to nominations.
For president.
For president.
I would like to nominate Angela Logarta for president.
I'd like to second that nomination.
Triple that nomination.
Did I ask if there are any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Motion to close the nomination.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I mean, do you want to do the... I think what I heard, and hard to hearing if you don't know that, it sounds like what you did is you closed the taking of nominations.
Okay.
But you didn't take an affirmative vote on your nomination as president. Did I hear that right?
Yeah.
So, just...
This is a need to be rolled call.
We can make it a roll call.
Okay, sure.
So, nomination on the floor is for president of the Board of Trustees, Angela Logarta. And I need my cheat sheet because I'm still learning your names. Trustee Santos.
I, yes.
Trustee Faupoua.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Bameo.
Yes.
And Vice President Logarta.
Yes.
Former Vice President Logarta, you are now president.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to open the floor to nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Marcel for vice president. For vice president.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Trustee Lauren for vice president.
Why are you going to make it so hard?
Is there a second to...
Is there a second?
Tell me with your eyes. There's no second, because I nominated a second.
So, the motion fails due to a lack of a second. Sorry, Marcel.
It's all good.
So, you can now...
So, motion to close the nomination.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, to be consistent, I'll do a roll call vote.
Thank you.
For Trustee Bameo to be vice president. Trustee Santos.
Yes.
Trustee Faupoua.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Bameo.
Yes.
And President Logarta.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for helping facilitate that. May we have the director's report?
We do not have a director's report this evening. Sorry to say.
All right. So, let's move on to the trustees' report. Last meeting, I introduced our four pillars of advocacy. So, when it comes to advocacy, creating awareness is our first pillar. We recently had our Coffee with Trustees event a couple weeks back, and it was pretty successful. We were able to observe Storytime. They had a full crowd in attendance. We were able to speak to the staff and get a tour of the ceremony branch. I really like the 3D printer. Would anyone like to share some feedback on our event and your experience?
Yeah, I thought it was great. It was nice to see the number of patrons that were there. I think we lucked out walking into Storytime because all the kids were really cute. But I think the biggest highlight for me was getting to talk to the staff. Like, a lot of the staff have been... Are just really passionate about the work that they're doing, and then to see so many volunteers just as passionate, I think really speaks to what the library does for the community there. And I actually, like, for me personally, I haven't spent too much time heading over there. That was my first time walking into the main library, like, the ceremony main library, and spending more than an hour there. So, that was really nice. I think it was... The libraries are super rich in resources, and so it really just makes me think about how we can better leverage all of those to the community, but that's awesome.
Yeah, for me, I think it was a good turnout, and I'm not sure if it is the first time it happens, Coffee with the Trustees. So, I think we should do that most often because I think this is one way we engage through, you know, the community, especially children's or, you know, other, you know, people, so, you know, here in the community. So, and, you know, for me, it's a good experience because it's, you know, you get to... You get a chance to mingle with, you know, patrons and, you know, the staff, so, you know, hear their concerns and all that. So, I would say if we can do... So, you know, hear their concerns and all that. So I would say if we can do this, I don't know, maybe in a quarterly basis or, you know, a monthly basis, but it depends on chela, so. Quarterly, right? Is it weekly? Oh, okay. Yeah. So, yeah, so I, I like it, so.
Um, I had an opportunity to speak to a patron of the library. He actually lives closer to the John Daly branch. Um, he lives in the apartments right above. And, but, he actually had a comment that, you know, while he's, you know, shopping, um, and he, and he's running his errands, he prefers, um, the ceremony location because of the parking situation. He says, um, even though, um, I think, I believe he has like a roommate and he has to rely on street parking. And there's not always street parking at the John Daly Library, um, so he frequents the ceremony location. Um, and he said it's a, he's, um, a young professional. He considers himself a young professional. He relies on the, um, branch, um, for, you know, a space, um, to kind of organize. He doesn't have an, his own office, but it kind of, um, you know, or, I don't know how much organizing of thoughts he could do because there was Storytime, but he, he did say that it was such a valuable resource for him. Um, he uses the computer, um, he uses, um, the area, he speaks to, um, the librarian and gets resources for, you know, whatever he's writing up. So I wish it just good to kind of hear from the patrons what, you know, the library means for them.
I, I, um, I came in and I sat with, um, where the children were and, um, it was beautiful to see how grandparents brought in their children, you know, so somebody can read to them and they have, you know, and the, and the staff that were, you know, spearheading that event or that activity were super, s- you know, engaged. They were superb. They were fantastic, you know. I don't remember the guy's name. Yeah, but please pass him.
Yeah, Jonathan was good.
Jonathan did a wonderful job, and I, I can see the relationship that, the bond that he had with the families and the children. I spoke with one of the staff that was over there and, um, some of the concerns that she kind of, I don't know if I had to say it, but I don't want her to get in trouble because she shared with me. However, we're, you know, we're reporting what I heard and, um, shared. So one thing, when I saw this spot, and I share this with Director Corrin, it was the space where they have the reading, it was too, um, too condensed inside. It was not really, you know, uh, big enough for the capacity that we're attending. So, um, the other thing I found out is that downstairs, I never went downstairs, but I was told that there's a bigger room downstairs. However, we don't have access, you know, accessible to a, to a elevator to go downstairs. Um, so parents with strollers, it's easily for them to just press the elevator and go down with, but they don't, they don't have that. This particular staff that she was hired for two arenas, which is for the children and the youth. However, she felt that more of her time now is catered to the children for Storytime, but not to the youth, which is something I'm seeing, having two kids of my own, that our youth, from the age of 12 to 18, they're lost. They don't have a lot of activities out there that we offer. And if we do offer activity, you have to be re- rich to pay for, you know, uh, private guitar lesson, a piano lesson, swimming lesson, all those stuff. So now she feels like she's already set for that Storytime and the little children. She wanted to pick up her other, you know, her other part, how she got hired or why she got hired. And she also feels like that there's too many Storytime. She wanted to, to have Storytime stop at a certain month, like around May. And then from there, then she can pick up with the youth. Because mind you, school finished, we have spring break, and then we have a long, you know, vacation for the. So she wanted to pick up those times, and that's the time to target the youth, to offer more activities in the libraries and cooperating with the Boys and Girls Club or the Parks and Recs. That won't cost a lot, but still manageable for some of our low-income families. So that's what she was sharing with me. So I asked her, what can I do? Cuz I can't cast a wand and say, it, it's happening. Um, but she said, just to, you know, she's voicing her opinion and just to voice it and advocate that she needs that. She needs that, um, other, her other half of her job is to, you know, she feels like she's overwhelmed. I hope she doesn't get in trouble with this. Please don't. She feels like she's good at her job because I can see that, and I can just imagine what can she do for the youth. So I'm just reporting that, but I love the 3D. So if one library has that, then how come not all our libraries don't have that? And because of its budget, it's, it's expensive. So I love that, and thank you for bringing the coffee. It was, it was beautiful to see our, um, community engaging with our families.
It was a great event. Um, I just wanted to, to let you know, um, we'll probably be talking about it in May, um, that during the summer, we, we have the Summer Learning Challenge, and there's a lot of components to that. But one of them is gonna be, um, the weekly activities. We'll have little pop-up activities that are led by high school interns. And then also staff are leading DIY, hands-on type activities, and we even have some paid performers come in. So there's gonna be stuff going on pretty much every week, at least one of the libraries, that's targeting not necessarily that, that teen crowd that's so hard to get, but a lot of those older, elementary level and older elementary level kids. And I think that there's a lot of good stuff going on during that time for them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Um, communication is our second pillar. Um, would anyone like to share some of our branch visits? I know we did our Coffee with Trustees, and there is an element of, um, connecting with the community and the patrons, which is why we, um, have our little homework to visit the libraries. But, um, did anybody get an opportunity to visit another branch and like to share?
I don't wanna be the one to talk too much. I didn't listen.
It's okay.
But I actually had a, a conversation with one of the staff in Bay Shore Library, and that was Josh. When I first called the, over there, to be honest, and I don't beat around the bush, uh, the guy was not really that friendly when he answered the phone. So that's kind of one thing, you know, about libraries, you know. Sometimes, I remember when I was growing up in my library, I was so scared when that particular staff is there, you know, like because of not welcoming face. So I will never go to the library until that person is not there. So when I spoke with him, and, um, one other thing that is going really well is that they do have Storytime on Thursdays at 4 o'clock. So I asked, you know, what's the total number of attendings, three to eight children that show up? And, uh, they do collaborate with the Boys and Girls sometimes with the, you know, the teens. They do computers of things over there, and some evenings, there's a lot of seniors and adults that comes to the library because they're only open Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10 to 6. They, I asked him what some of the things that needed to be done or some of the things that, um, while staffing, you know, uh, and that goes down to budget. Their heater system just went, got fixed. So it's, it's going well. I didn't know that the heater was not, not working. It's been cold there cuz it's been cold lately. He suggested that they open five days a week. I said, oh, okay. It will be nice. Um, but I did mention this to Director Corrin. If we really look at where the location for Bay Shore Library is at, it's like a incline that you really need a escalator that go up like that to get to the library. And the population in Bay Shore community, we have lots of our senior, you know, families, you know, and by climbing that hill, you really need something. I mean, when I used to take my preschool class over there, I must have lost five pounds every week that I go over there to walk the children over there. I even, um, so, and there's not a lot of parking there too for, for, and it's like hidden. It's a nice view, but it's hidden on top. So that's just my observation with Bay Shore Community, um, Library. But, um, I don't know what we can do with staffing. And so I told him, well, we can bring the staff if you bring the attendance, you know. Because why would we have five, two full-time staff there and two part-time if we don't have a lot? So I asked him, can you estimate how many people that walk in the library those two days? He said, I can't give you those numbers, but to get it from somebody.
You have a counter.
Yeah, so I wonder then if we can keep track of that and see, you know. And I also mentioned, like, having a survey for our community. You know, why are some of the reason why you can't come to the library, you know? I'm just thinking out of the box to see what we can help. That's it.
There's not much we can do about the, the location, but we are definitely gonna be working on the parking issue um, that has to do with the, the days open and how it aligns with the, the street sweeping. And people are taking advantage, you know, in the neighborhood. You'll think, oh, my goodness, the, the library is bustling. So that is on our radar, and we, we definitely.
And it's not like you can have, um, some, an employee go outside and manage parking for you all.
No, no, Daily City PD has been really helpful in the past, but people have a short memory and need to be reminded, so. We are in the midst of a staff, um, changeover. We've just brought on a new person. She's gonna be onboarding. And, um, starting next Thursday, she, she will be the, the manager of that location.
And, and just to dovetail on the, you know, staffing issue, so we just filled the one vacancy we had. So we, every authorized position within the library system is currently filled. So we, we don't have, uh, the ability to bring on, bring on more staff right now. But it feels good to be fully staffed. Seems like we're, we're constantly trying to get fully staffed, and we're there right now.
For instance, the, the person who's at the Bay Shore right now is our cataloger. He's normally, you know, entering books in the computers and processing things, and he got pulled away. So two fifths of his time for, for the last many months has been doing this. And then the, the other librarian he spoke with, she's used services, which is one of our most critical functions. And three days of each of her weeks has been taken to work at John Daly. So now that we are fully staffed, that's gonna free them up to do what their main purpose is. And I think that, that's gonna make a difference as well. But it's a very small number of librarians for the number of libraries.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just because we're fully staffed, it doesn't necessarily mean it meets like the adequate number of staffing we would need to have the services, right? And I think that just goes back to, to like the real, like, I think the real deficit that we're feeling around like resourcing the library. Cuz I, I, even at the ceremony branch, I talked to three different staff at three different times. And I was like, hey, what are, what are like your key needs? And every single time, they're like, staffing. We need more staffing. Um, and when I got a chance to talk to Cole for a little bit, um, he was sharing at ceremony, they've been trying to like shift the layout. Um, I know they created like a little teen corner, but his biggest concern was like, yes, we can have all of these, but we don't even have like the people that we need to like hold teen programs. Um, and so I think that's just something we need to think deeply about when it comes to the fundraising is like. I, I know we've had conversations around possible one-time grants, but, you know, when we're thinking about the deep issue of staffing, like, we need sustainable funding sources um, and sustainable sources of revenue to fund those programs. And so, yeah, just, yeah, I, I'm echoing what you're saying, Teresa, around the deep need for that.
I, even with staffing, staffing aligning with salaries.
Right, right.
Because I think there's, you know, we have a turnover of librarians, you know, moving to other cities that offers them more or, you know, and all goes down to budget, you know.
So, um, for, for next month, um, before meeting, I'd like, um, the same thing, all of us to be able to visit, um, libraries individually. I'm gonna put John Daly again on my calendar since I wasn't able to go this month. Cole takes ceremony. Does anybody wanna take ceremony for a visit for this upcoming month?
I, I can do that.
What about Bay Shore?
I can do Bay Shore.
I'll do Bay Shore. Okay. And Westlake?
I, I can do Westlake.
Thank you. So trustee Balmeo, you were able to attend the poetry presented by Eileen Castaneda. How was that event?
Oh, yeah. Okay. I would like to share that, so.
Representation.
Uh, I know it, that's, that's a Saturday, and I almost forget. So, yeah, it's a great, you know, opportunity to, um, you know, attend this kind of event, so. And, uh, it was a good turnout. There's a lot of, uh, you know, people showed up. And, uh, Eileen Castaneda is, uh, I found out that she is the third appointed uh, being as a poet laureate. And, and she is the first, uh, Asian was appointed. And since they were started, uh, they fill in that position since 2013. And she was impressed that, you know, uh, local officials were supported on that event. And it was, uh, you know, uh, there's, uh, you know, uh, former mayor, uh, former mayor, uh, Chastel Manalo, and also, uh, San Mateo County Supervisor, and also, uh, council member, Pam DiGiovanni. And there's a couple of, uh, state commissioners, school boards, so. And she was happy. And also, she's, she told us that this is the first time on, on her event that there's a, uh, there's a snacks. So, but, you know, um, like we said, so there's a, it's a good turnout. And also there's a audience participation about, you know, uh, the poet, so which is, which is great. And, uh, you know, uh, I forgot, uh, her name, so, you know, she was, she was happy to share about her.
Oh, yes, Kim Shuck, who's the, who's the poet laureate from San Francisco. The, the laureates are, are working together to, to really promote poetry.
Right, right. So, yeah, so, I mean, you know, uh, I'm impressed about this, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, sharing about the poet, and I didn't know that there's several, you know, patrons as well are, you know, doing the poet. So, you know, would like to share their talent, so.
And Eileen donated several books of poetry that we're gonna be adding, yeah.
So, and also, I told Eileen, I think we, you know, we should do this often, so. So, yeah, that's my, I, at the same time, when I was there, cuz I said, you know, cuz I was assigned last, uh, meeting for, to visit, and I was able to speak with, uh, you know, uh, only the, uh, associate. And she was there for the last 30 years, and I forgot her name, and I know she was.
Oh, you talked to Sandy.
Sandy, there you go. I, I, I said, you know, I thought you're in, uh, you are in, uh, in ceremony. Oh, cuz we got rotated, you know, once in a while, so to help out. I said, wow, that's great, but you know what? I'm very impressed and salute you, you know, working for the last 30 years, you know, and. I'm very impressed and salute you, you know, working for the last thirty years, you know, and library, so. And, you know, we appreciate your, uh, you know, contribution to the library, so, yeah.
What's the, what's the longest any employee in the library has been?
Uh, I think it's probably Reshenda. She's what, thir-? Thirty, ooh, yeah.
I guess thirty-one.
Thirty-one, sure, let's go with thirty-one, probably.
It'd be nice to acknowledge those.
The city actually has a wonderful um annual event where they acknowledge people who've met milestones. You know, amongst the staff, all the different departments, the department heads come out and and kind of award them. Um, it's a really beautiful thing that they they support.
I think she got her thirty year.
And she says she's about to retire some.
So but that's, um, she's at the currently, although she has worked at all the libraries, she, um, that particular employee is at the at the main library.
That's really nice.
Thank you. So, um, our third pillar is community involvement involvement. We had um the video project on the agenda, but, you know, that's going to take funding. Um, and some resources, so I'm gonna put the video project on hold right now. Um, and like I'd like to focus on um National Library Week. Um, National Library Week is April seventh through thirteenth. Um, I was thinking we could have a coffee with trustees during that week. Um, shall we do it on a, did we do it on a Thursday? Okay, shall we do it on a Thursday again? Ceremony. It's our main location. But we can change locations too. We can, we can do it at Westlake.
The parking, yeah.
But when is, and is there story time in the evening? We can do it Thursday morning at Westlake. So that will be, sorry, I just need to look at my calendar.
Eleventh.
So April eleventh.
April eleven, okay.
From what time?
We can do ten to eleven thirty again.
Ten to eleven thirty, okay.
Does anybody else have any ideas for National Library Week?
You do have a draft of a proclamation. Um, the intent would be for the city council to proclaim National Library Week at their regular meeting of Monday, April eighth. So in the next couple of weeks, if you want to take a look at the draft and if you want to make revisions to it. You can share those with uh. Sheila or I. And then maybe one or all of you can be at the council meeting to receive the proclamation for National Library Week at the city council meeting at seven P M. On Monday, April eighth in this room.
I can make that.
Be doing social media stuff for the week, of course, so if you can follow us and retweet or whatever one does.
Would the lib, each library be able to? Do something, you know, like in their libraries with their. You know, and then take pictures of it and then. I don't know, I'm just trying to see how are, or that's too much on their plate already.
Traditionally, each branch celebrates. National Library Week in some fashion. Maybe loosely structured and sometimes more structured, but there there's usually. A celebrations kind of atmosphere at each of the libraries during the week. Some get a little more carried away than others, but. Every branch will definitely recognize it in in some way.
We've done the book faces. I don't know if you're familiar with these, where you take a book that has like a partial face. We've bribed people with sweets to to follow us on social media. We've done various things.
Can we do like a reading challenge?
It's usually food and.
There's always.
Decorations and.
So that's through the whole week. So I was wondering if we can. Even save our visits. And then use it for that week. We can go on the week of national. And then we can participate.
Maybe um a person a day, right, like Monday through Friday?
Yeah, I mean, I, anybody can, if they're celebrating through the whole week. It doesn't matter what day you go, as long as you go within that week. I just, you know, just a suggestion.
And Sheila, do you have, um, like an idea of what they're doing?
Not yet.
Okay, okay, I'm, we'll we'll get communication, I'm sure.
So then it's not a National Library Week for Bay Shore because it only opened two days. So how do we?
Yeah, three days.
So how is the proclamation be actually? If some parts are not open for a week.
It's National.
I'm looking at the American Library Association website. Um, and I think two themes that could possibly be really good, both for Bay Shore and the limited capacity. So on Tuesday is National Library Workers' Day. Um, and I think I'm just thinking about just like how hard our librarians work and like what they've been calling for around staff. But I think it would be great if we can do some sort of appreciation or we can get the community to write appreciations or something to them. Um, and then on Thursday is Take Action for Libraries Day. I know that is our coffee with commissioners and I know there was the idea to put. A video, um, and do some sort of like, like propaganda, right, to promote libraries? But if we're gonna have coffee with folks already and that's like a national hashtag day. Um, maybe we can amp up the social media game then. And that, and that could kind of supplement what we were trying to do around the video. And that's hashtags are like, young people are about hashtags, you know.
Yeah, the social media is really. What people are seeing, quite frankly, and it's and it's free. It's free, free marketing. So, um, our next item is fundraising. I have no updates at this time, but recently attended the Saint Patrick's Day event, um, held by D C P L A. So we we had a great turnout and um I'm actually gonna hand the floor over to Mr. Lex to share D C P L A updates.
Thank you very much and congratulations uh on the election of the president and vice president. Board of trustee members, let me welcome you to the Board of Trustees. On behalf of the Daily City Public Library Associates. As you're new, I'm new to the D C P L A board. Normally, uh, the executive director, Victoria, would be attending the meeting and making uh the report from D C P L A. But uh, there's an event at her daughter's school tonight that prevented her from being here and so I'm here on her behalf. Thank you for allowing me to report on the Saint Patrick's Day lunch. It was another successful event. It was opened by Tom Norris, our president. And comments by Adrian Tissier, who is the event chair. Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester uh was the first person to address the group. And his topic was the essentials of libraries, V A B. And I've been racking my brain to remember what V A B.
Value added benefit.
Thank you, value added benefits. Thank you, Joseph. Uh, and he was followed by Vanessa Garcia, uh, who was kind of the keynote speaker. Her topic uh was libraries are essential to our community now more than ever. Uh, she's the owner of the Seven Mile House. She's written a book on the Seven Mile House. Uh, and she's done an author's talk on the Seven Mile House, so she's been involved in Daily City Libraries and very supportive. After that, we went to the portion where we had three different individuals. Talking about special needs that the library has expressed to D C P L A. This is called Fund the Need and the first speaker was San Mateo County Supervisor for District Five, David Canepa. And his Fund the Need project was a Carvy CNC from Inventables. This CNC device would add to the Idea Lab a desktop three D carving machine. It would feature a fully enclosed work area which contains noise as well as dust and debris. The machine works with a variety of materials, including wood, soft metals like aluminum, acrylic, H D P E, A B S. Corian, Delrin, and machinable foam. So that was one area where people attending were asked to make a specific contribution. If they felt that that was worthwhile and they had an interest in that. Uh, the second area was presented by Floyd Ganella and Margaret Taylor. Uh, Mr. Ganella is the former county superintendent of public instruction and Ms. Taylor is the former county health director. And they were asking uh for funding for the Lucky Day Collection. This would involve funds to purchase additional copies of high-demand items. It would be in a special collection that does not allow holds or renewals. This collection would serve visitors to the library who like to browse and would increase the likelihood that they would find something appealing. The third area was presented by Cheryl Amas- Amassio.
Sounds about right.
Okay, uh, the Kaiser Permanente Public Affairs Representative. And her Fund the Need request was on behalf of uh graphic novels to boost the collection. Graphic novels have a wide audience from children to adults. The library's collection grows each year with popular titles, but the budget doesn't allow for more adventurous purchasing. To build a broader collection. I was surprised to find out that graphic novels are what I used to call comic books. So those were the three Fund the Need areas. And let's see, the meeting. Concluded with Teresa Proaño, uh, singing several Irish songs. And Patrick Sweetland, who's the former director of the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources for Daily City. Uh, giving a closing Irish sentiment or prayer. Again, it was seen as very successful, very well organized, nicely attended and all the feedback I've gotten so far has been positive. I would like to also uh let you know that the next Daily City Public Library Associates meeting. Will be on Tuesday, April second, uh, from eleven to twelve thirty, presumably in the community room at Ceramati Library. And will be followed in April on the twenty-third by the second meeting of the month. This is because the normal March meeting has been postponed to April second. And so the normal meeting day of April twenty-third will also feature a meeting. So if there's a meeting or, excuse me, a member of the Board of Trustees, uh, that can attend that meeting on behalf of the board. Observe what's going on and then come back and report to the board, that would be great. If that's not possible, please let Victoria know and we'll try and, you know, find a way to get that report back to you. Do you have any questions? I'll answer suggestions, yes.
I I unfortunately I couldn't make it to the event, but I heard it was a successful turnout. From some of the council members. I appreciate all that was done and for the everything, even the food, they said it was delicious. Yes, so thank you so much for reporting to us that couldn't make it that day.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having your heart there. I would also ask if there's any member of the Board of Trustees, and some of you are new, who have not joined D C P L A. Uh, please do so if you would like an application. They're available at the local libraries or through CHALA. Or through any D C P L A member, including myself. We need your support because it is a member-supported organization. Uh, it also uh provides funding through grant applications. And through corporate support and sponsorships. And also through the generous support of Wells Fargo from time to time. So we appreciate uh everything that we get from the community, but we need the individual membership support as well. And you're the leaders in the community for the libraries and so I hope you'll set a great example.
Before you jump off, can you uh repeat again the three Fund the Need areas?
Yeah, the three Fund the Need areas, uh, sure. The first was called a Carvy. I assume that's a proprietary name. Uh, CNC, computer numerical controlled uh device from Inventables. Uh, a three D carving machine. That contains noise and dust and works with a variety of materials. The second was called the Lucky Day Collection. These are high-demand items that would not be subject to holds or renewals. Which means they would be in the library for someone to walk in and discover and to check out on an individual case-by-case basis. And then the third was graphic novels, uh, to increase the collection of graphic novels in the system.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lex, and I would um urge you new trustees to be a huge advocate for D C P L A. I remember um being a new trustee, getting plenty of friends and family to sign up. They do not have to be Daily City residents, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so um it's just twenty-five dollars.
I was just gonna say, is it free?
They are a nonprofit organization that helps us tremendously. But um if you can get any type of corporate sponsorships through your own employer. Friends and family willing to sign up, letting them know that you're new trustee members. You'd be surprised at who would support, want to support you. Thank you so much, Mr. Lex.
You can also join online, D C P L A dot org.
And I I have a question, uh, uh, let's say, uh. Do we have a draft letter that we could share it to, let's say, a corporate? Because me, I'm aligned with the, you know, several insurance companies that I know, uh, based on my profession, so. Is there's a a draft letter that I could send it to insurance carriers that, you know, proud? Because I know I inquired, they said, you know, they have a, you know, a department who handle that when it comes to, you know. For that uh donation for, uh, let's say, the community, so. It's just a matter of, you know, formal letter that I could bring up to the insurance carrier, so.
Right, well, I would suggest that you identify your target. And then contact the executive director, Victoria, and that you jointly uh draft that letter. Because you would have some insider knowledge about the person it was being addressed to and the interests of the group. And Victoria would be able to give you all of the background information uh in text representing D C P L A. And its need and its request. Thank you for asking.
We have an event coming up in May eighteen, uh, which is hosted by Pitt, which is Peninsula. Pacific Islands together at Jefferson. We base there. And I wonder then if you guys can have a table there, because we do have tables. Uh, if you can just let me know, I'll give you my information. Maybe, I have Victoria's card. And then if you guys have tables there for people that want to sign in to be a member. Because this is my first time of hearing this. because this is my first time of hearing this organization. So it would be nice to share the word out to some of our community if they wanna be part of the, of the group.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more and DCPLA has tabled in the Senior Center, Ceramoni, and at various events in the community. So this would be of interest to us and I would just say, contact Victoria and issue the invitation. And if it would be possible to have someone sitting at the DCPLA table who would know people attending that event, who could kind of bring them over and say, have you been, are you a member?
I will be that person.
There you go, thank you very much, Teresa.
I will bring the crowd to that table.
Fantastic, okay.
Thank you, any other announcements?
State of the City address will be made at the next council meeting, day March twenty-fifth, is that date right? Calendar bearing people. At six PM prior to the regular council meeting, Mayor Ray Buenafantura will be making the State of the City address in this building, it will be, I believe, televised live at.
What day?
Monday, May twenty-fifth, is that correct? I'm seeing some heads nod.
March, or May?
March twenty-fifth?
March twenty-fifth? March twenty-fifth?
Yes, it's the twenty-fifth, not May. This is coming Monday.
This is coming Monday.
Next week.
At what time?
Six PM.
Is there any way we can, like, I know Carla, what's her last, who sends us those, those emails about upcoming? Okay, I'm so sorry if I misread. Is there any way you can break it down in the list of all the events and then all the trustees who can be available? So that way we don't sign up all at one activity. So that way, okay, if I'm available on that day, I'll go, you know, and then the next person don't have to sign under there. Or maybe not necessarily has to be three or four people attending one, you know.
Yeah, most of them are just weekly programs that, I mean, you're always, always welcome, but like, you know, if there's an upcoming Idea Lab, it's kind of an after-school program and we get kids coming in, so it doesn't necessarily need a presence from the board, but you're always welcome. Do you, like, a sign up for just special events or?
I mean, all the.
I think you can probably just let her know if you'll be able to make it and then.
That works, and then if somebody else is interested, they'll know that you, you'll already be there.
And for some of the larger community-wide events that aren't necessary library related, Charles Morrow from the City Manager's Office has been really good about getting that information out to Commissioner.
I've been getting communication from Charles.
So I don't know if you're on his most updated email list.
So, some of those emails, I don't get it, I only get emails from you, so.
I will make sure he has your email in his little database, because he's pretty good about sending out emails for community-wide kind of events.
Okay, so maybe if you get it, because you.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll shoot him an email and let him know to include you all in the communication as well. Thank you.
I have a question, is it possible that, because I know there's a lot of events going on, is it possible we can put it like one calendar that we could print it instead of, you know, the trail, you know, in one page?
I, I just exported it from our online event calendar, so I can, I can do it another way if that would work better for you. Do you want something printable or?
Yeah, yes, printable, at least, you know, when I print it, so everything is categorized, you know, let's say, you know, different activities, at least we can have handy, you know, thing. So, just a suggestion if possible.
I will see what I can do.
Thank you, Sheila.
So we're a little over time, so in the interest of time, we'll go on to our agenda building. So for our next meeting, we'll, for our creating awareness, we'll update with our coffees, Coffee with Trustees event that will go on during Library Week. The communication will also report our branch visit. And for our community involvement, we also will be speaking about Library Week. We'll keep fundraising on the agenda.
Joseph, I have a question around the funding piece, I'm just wondering, is there any way? Because I know we've like, we did like our orientation around funding, but is there any way we can get some sort of like public presentation around the state of like library funding right now? I just feel like it would be a little bit helpful to have more of a space to kind of think through what are the real opportunities that we can push for funding on the commission, but I, I, yeah, I just wanna explore the possibility of doing something like that.
We could do that. I will be in Chicago when you meet again.
Maybe the next, maybe?
Or any of this information accessible to the public.
All, all the city budget information is, it's, it's public record, it's online. The problem is you're digging through documents that thick. So, we could probably, you know, especially since you're all relatively new.
They haven't gotten our, our bookmark, yeah.
But we, I mean, similar, similar to the orientation information.
Similar to the one you gave us, it was very.
Yeah, just like, you know.
Really helpful.
We can provide, the lady here with the copy.
Yeah, like the context.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it was really, it was probably the longest trustees meeting we had, but I heard the word, advocates, the words advocacy and advocate a lot tonight. And I think really, in the situation we're in, that's probably the most important contribution. We don't expect you to sell your house to help fund the libraries, but advocating and, and, you know, letting people know that libraries are important and it's an important part of the quality of life for any community to have a good viable library system, so that was, that was a real positive thing today, thank you.
We appreciate having you here. Okay, if there are no other comments, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.